Good evening and welcome to the August 12th, 2024 legislative session of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of an emergency, please remain calm and exit through the double doors you came in and make a right and proceed to the stairwell. If that hallway is blocked, then exit to the left, around the corner, and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator and let us know if you need any assistance. Public comments will be heard on any item at the end of this agenda. Please complete a form from the table by the door and give it to the clerk. You will have four minutes. Please silence your cell phones. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This time, I'll call for a moment of silence in memory of two youth, Demi Lee Jones and Tyron Ty Culver Jr., who lost their lives in the past week and a half. And the city of Salisbury's thoughts and prayers are with the families, and we do wish some grievance at this time. This time, we'll call Pastor TJ Smith from Parkway Church of God to give the city invocation.
Let us pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we gather this evening in all of your sovereign presence, recognizing that every good and perfect gift comes from you. As we begin this meeting, we invite your wisdom, your guidance, and your peace to fill everyone in this place. Lord, you've entrusted each leader here with the responsibility of governing our city, and we ask that you grant them discernment and strength needed to make decisions that honor you and serve the common good. May their deliberations be marked by justice, compassion, and integrity. We acknowledge the challenges before us, the complexities of governance, the weight of public trust, and the ever-present need for unity. Lord, let us turn our hearts toward you, seeking your direction above all. Bless our mayor, our city council members, and all those who labor tirelessly to serve our community, protect our first responders, and grant peace and safety to our city. In a world filled with uncertainty, we thank you for the steadfast hope we have in you. May this meeting and all that follows be guided by your hand, bringing the outcomes that reflect your goodness and grace. We ask all this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior and King. Amen.
At this time, I'll turn it over to our clerk of court, Mr. James McAllister, who is just in time to administer the oath of office for our Finance Director, Information Services Director, Infrastructure and Development Director, and Clerk's Office Director. Mr. McAllister?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll excuse for the...
No.
Went to the wrong location.
Keep you on your toes. At first, we'll call up Sandra Green, Finance Director.
Do this.
You want to do the poll?
Yeah.
Yep, sign here and then swearing in over there.
Is that... Yeah. So you're gonna have to stand over here next to him so you get to be on camera, and then you're gonna start over there.
It's gonna pan that way.
It's gonna pan this way. It's gonna come and... Chris, we're all set.
There you are.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Sandra Green.
Do swear and affirm.
Do swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Finance Director for the City of Salisbury.
Finance Director of the City of Salisbury.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
We'll call our Information Services Director.
Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Steve Dickerson.
Do swear and affirm.
Do swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Director of Information Services.
Director of Information Services.
For the City of Salisbury.
For the City of Salisbury.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Two copies of the same things.
Nice to meet you.
Can I swear in the Bible? Is that appropriate?
It's fine with me.
He has one. Can we borrow your Bible? Can I swear on it?
So, please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Nichols Voitick.
Do swear and affirm.
Do swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Director of the Department of Infrastructure and Development.
Director. Director of Department of Infrastructure and Development.
For the City of Salisbury.
For the City of Salisbury.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Look at this babe.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Julie English.
Do swear and affirm.
Do swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and the laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
City Clerk for the City of Salisbury.
City Clerk for the City of Salisbury.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and the laws of this state.
Very good.
I should have brought my jacket. I should have brought my jacket. It's chilly in here.
Thank you, Mr. McAllister.
Thank you.
And congratulations to you all, and we look forward to working with another round of applause for our newly appointed. On today's agenda, we'll have this consent agenda read by our City Clerk, Julie English. We will have our Procurement Director go over our Tier Six Change Order. We'll have Resolution 3362 read by City Administrator Andy Kitzrow, and Ordinance Number 2882 read by City Attorney Ashley Boucher. At this time, I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the legislative agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll call for a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. English?
Good evening. I got music, yes. So on the consent agenda this evening, we have four sets of minutes. We have the July 15th, 2024 work session minutes, July 20th, 2024 goal-setting session minutes, the July 22nd, 2024 legislative session minutes, and closed session minutes. We also have some appointments for the boards and commissions. Resolution Number 3357, the appointment of Daniel McBride to the Human Rights Advisory Committee, term ending August 2026. Resolution Number 3358, appointing Natalie St. Fard to the Human Rights Advisory Committee, term ending August 2026. Resolution Number 3359, the appointment of Bonnie Reichner, I hope that's right, to the Truth Committee, term ending August 2027. And then Resolution Number 3360, appointment of Shonda Ward to the Disability Advisory Committee, term ending August 27. And then finally, Resolution Number 3361, appointment of Brandon Thoreau, maybe, to the Disability Advisory Committee, term ending August 2027.
All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we thank all those who are appointed to the respective committees. Do we have anyone here from a committee? I do see one person in that. We see two people. Wonderful, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you both for your commitments, and we look forward to the work you'll provide to the City of Salisbury. Thank you so much. This time, we'll pivot to our change order. I'll call for a motion in a second to approve the Tier Six Change Order for...
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Miller, hello.
Hello, everyone. All right, so this is per Section 2.32.085, Change Orders of the Salisbury Municipal Code. The Department of Procurement seeks approval from City Council for the following change order. This is for RFP 21-107. It's the Paleo Water Treatment Filter Replacement. It is change order number one. We originally bid this back in April of 2021. This was building design services at the Paleo Water Treatment Plant, which included replacing the existing green sand pressure filters, designing a building addition to house the new filters, and replacing the existing liner-based backwash basin with a permanent basin. So this new change order is to design a larger building, which includes a granular activated carbon filtration system for the PFOS removal and the relocation of the backwash basins. The total cost of this change order is $432,000, which would bring the total contract value to $728,737.
Right.
It's a mouthful.
Yes. All those in favor of Tier Six Change Order, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
I'll call for a motion in a second to approve Resolution Number 3362.
So moved. Second.
Resolution Number 3362, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to accept the donation of real property located at 307R Delaware Avenue, Salisbury, Maryland 21801, from Robert Dale DeShiel Jr. and Charles T. Capooty, co-trustees of the Twilly Non-Exempt Residuary Trust UW, whereas the donor-owner, Robert Dale DeShiel Jr. and Charles T. Capooty, co-trustees of the Twilly Non-Exempt Residuary Trust UW, desire to donate the real property located at 307R Delaware Avenue, Salisbury, Maryland 21801, acquired by D. dated November 13, 2015, and recorded among the Land Records of Wyomaca County, Maryland, in Library Number 3942 Folio 372, with State Department of Assessments and Taxation Number 09-070079. And where it's the Salisbury Police Department being situated adjacent to this property and having a need for additional space for parking, would be benefit from the acceptance of this donation. And whereas the current size of the lot at 3,000 square feet does not meet existing zoning requirements to build a house on it, and the property does not have direct access to Delaware Avenue and is surrounded by City of Salisbury-owned property, and whereas by this resolution, the Council hereby approves the acceptance of the donation of the real property located at 307R Delaware Avenue, Salisbury, Maryland 21801, from Robert Dale DeShiel Jr. and Charles T. Capooty, co-trustees of Twilly Non-Exempt Residuary Trust UW, good word, contingent upon the city obtaining clear title to the property and that the city will waive or pay the outstanding fee and taxes currently due on this property referenced herein. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows: Section 1, that the mayor is hereby authorized to accept the donation on behalf of the City of Salisbury, Robert Dale DeShiel Jr. and Charles T. Capooty, co-trustees of the Twilly Non-Exempt Residuary... Yes. Trust UW of 307R Delaware Avenue, Salisbury, Maryland 21801, and is authorized to sign all documents which may be necessary in connection with the donation. Section 2, the city solicitor shall handle the settlement for the property and shall perform all actions necessary to ensure that clear title to the property is obtained by the city before the city is obligated to accept the donations of the property. The next two are standard boilerplate. Thank you. Residuary.
I wasn't gonna correct you on Mr. Capooty's last name.
Capooty.
All those in favor of Resolution Number 3362, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Kitzrow. I'll call for a motion in a second to approve Ordinance Number 2882 for first reading.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Boucher?
Good evening, everyone. Ordinance Number 2882, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 25, excuse me, general fund budget and appropriate the funds received from the recovery and recycling of scrap metal. Whereas the Salisbury Police Department has recycled metal and brass shell casings recovered as a result of firearm qualifications. And whereas the recycling of these metal and brass shell casings through Salisbury Scrap Metal, Inc., has resulted in a payment to SPD in the amount of $6,681.64. And whereas funds recovered from Salisbury Scrap Metal, Inc., in the amount of $6,681.64 has been paid to the city and was deposited into the general fund. And whereas the Salisbury Police Department requests that these funds in the amount of $6,681.64 be placed in the SPD Small Tools Account, which is 21021546009, which is used in part to purchase and service police officer equipment, as well as firearms training supplies for SPD police officers. And whereas the budget amendment, as provided herein, must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council. Section 1 of Ordinance 2882 reads, "The city's fiscal year 2025 general fund budget being hereby amended as follows: 1. Increase general fund revenue Salisbury Scrap Metal account by $6,681.64; 2. Increase the Salisbury Police Department budget by that same amount, which is $6,681.64; and 3. Increase Salisbury Police Department Small Tools Account 21021546009 by that same amount, which again is $6,681.64."
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. All those in favor, Ordinance Number 2882, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. This time, we'll pivot to public comments. We'll start with Matt Drew.
Thank you all very much. I came today... So first off, I'm Matt Drew. I live at 301 North Claremont here in Salisbury. I came here today to speak in favor of, I understand that one of the topics that's not on the agenda was to speak about funding for future bike improvements, including the rail trail project and the improvements related to Vision Zero. I just came to, you know, I'm not gonna be off-topic at all with what you've heard from me in the past. I continue to be an advocate for bike lane improvements here in town. I'll say, I rode my bike here today. There's plenty of bike spaces for parking out in front, so for those in the future, I walk 15 steps from where I park my bike into this building, so I can guarantee that I probably had the best parking space of anybody here in town. But I wanted to just reiterate the importance of continuing the efforts that have been already set in place and that this group, I hope, is very supportive of. We have, as a community, we've won over $12 million in grant funding from the federal government to make our Vision Zero program a reality for improvements for both pedestrians and cyclists. We have a seven-phase, actually probably more than seven phases. We've got John Wilson, who's our transportation manager here today, who can correct me with the correct details, but we have a seven-phase rail with trail design that's been made. So we have all the vital nexus, I'll say, of things to really make Salisbury a better place to ride a bike. So my main message is, please continue the support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drew.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mary Hubner?
I'm Mary Hubner. I live in Salisbury. I'm here to talk about my neighborhood of Spring Chase, which is an HOA neighborhood on the east side of town, near the Old World Museum. And we have a situation with our lighting in the neighborhood. They're old. The neighborhood is a little over 30 years old, and the lights are too. And the city had apparently, excuse me, said they would replace them about 10 years ago, but that never happened. We contacted Angela, I've forgotten your last name, and she came, we were in her district, and she came earlier this year, and we walked around and looked at the lights, but we, nothing's happened. There are 100 homes in the neighborhood, and I guess around, I don't know, around 150 people, and our lights just aren't good, so we would really like them to be replaced. And at the very least, if we could get a timeline when this will happen. And on that sort of same line, the potholes, well, everywhere, are awful. But coming in on Edgewood or to Spring Chase, I think one was sort of fixed, but now another one's developed. It's awful, and I feel like you guys are gonna have to buy me a new set of tires sometime soon because the potholes are just awful, and everywhere. And it seems also, I don't know who's in charge of sewer covers, but the sewer covers are... They're all, you're always just going in a hole, kinda, so that's our request. If I have a few more, if I have at least another minute. I haven't been for a while, but the last time I was here, Von Siggers and I were talking about an uncomfortable vibe that we sort of had with the council, and asked for, and Von particularly asked for civility, and I feel the same way. Then I found out that a friend of mine was escorted out just a week ago or so because she was trying to explain a rule that she felt we were entitled to. So, seems like civility still needs a little work. Thank you.
Hello, Alex McCray. I'm a resident of Martella Springs, Maryland. I am a member of the VPAC Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and I'm here to voice support for continuing with the spending, the allocated funds for the rail trail. And I think that that will provide a good place for people to ride their bike. It will get them, provide a safe place for them to ride their bike, and then the Safe Streets and Vision Zero should work to minimize people, or to reduce people's risk when they are out riding bikes or walking, which it's important for a city to be able to be walkable as well as drive. It's just, I think it's a better way to transport about the city, and it gives opportunity for people to have interactions that you can't have when you're behind a windshield and rolled-up window. You don't get to interact with people in the same way. And so I just think that moving forward, that they, that the city should spend the money that's been allocated for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCray. Seeing no other...
Nothing online.
Seeing no other public comments, we'll shift to administration updates and comments. We'll start with you, Mr. Kitzrow.
Sure. First, Mayor sends his regards. He fell ill this afternoon, so decided to take an opportunity to go relax, so I'm here representing both of us. Real quick, National Night Out was a success. We got a little excited for Hot Man at the end, but I think it was well-attended and everyone had a great time, so appreciate all of the law enforcement, all of the volunteers who went out there and helped make that a huge success, and I'm assuming you guys will comment on it as well. Safe Streets for All Rail Trail, we had a meeting today with the transportation team. We are getting close. I think we'll probably be ready to talk about that at our next work session with some final decision points on that. So we're getting close, I promise, Angela. We're getting there. Also, just, you know, we had forced-wearing ends tonight of four department heads. As you see, there's a lot of transition happening at the City of Salisbury. A lot of familiar faces, just in new roles. We're excited to have Nick coming and joining us from New York. So just have patience if you're working with us. We also are having another transition within our office. John Tall is transitioning to go work for Human Resources. He will be taking over Frank Kenneth's position as he retires here in a couple months. So Tom is going to be joining us back in our office again, so we kept the seat warm for him, but he'll be jumping in in a part-time capacity, helping us move forward. So stay tuned on that continued evolution there. But a lot of new people in a lot of new positions, so just bear with us. But it gives us an opportunity to look at everything from a fresh perspective and implement some needed improvements, so continue to ask questions, talk to our team, and we look forward to serving everybody.
So continue to ask questions, talk to our team, and we look forward to serving everybody. And I think that's all. Yep, that's all.
Mr. Kitzrow. And again, we do wish the, hope the mayor feels better soon. He did let me know before the meeting that he would not be able to attend. We'll start with council comments. We'll pivot to council vice president, Ms. Blake.
Thank you. Thank you. A couple different things. I do, I went to the Salisbury Fire Department's Junior Academy graduation on Friday at 2:00. There was about 16 youth who had gone all week. They did some fantastic things. They actually were doing training to be EMS or future firefighters, and they did everything from climbing ladders to mock accident, getting victims underneath cars, everything you could think of, and it was really nice. So I'm hoping that we have fostered some relationships there and that they're interested enough to continue to be and work with their fire department. We do have Third Friday coming up. I know the Bike and Pedestrian Committee will be there doing bike valet, and I want to reiterate that I do support these projects and grants. I know we had talked about them. I would like to know some final things before that gets totally rolled out. I know there were some different things that were being thought of with those monies, and that's important because that's a big pot of money, and projects have been well on the books, well approved. Also at Third Friday, our Human Rights Committee will be there again, passing on information about the Human Rights Committee, kinds of things they do, and events and activities that are coming up for them. So that'll be interesting. That's Third Friday, this Friday. I do want to circle back to the Spring Chase. The other piece of that story is, I brought it back and had open discussions in work sessions and legislative sessions. The mayor himself said he was going to make it a priority, and he's been informed through email and my phone calls, personal contact, and our conversations right here in chambers about the lights and the potholes on Edgewater. So I do know that they have been brought up to the administration. I don't know when or if they will, or if they've made a list or not. I don't know where that stands. But I have made every effort and exhausted that, for that community, for sure. And I really too hope that we hear something soon, because that's been in the works for over a decade, so, yes. So, I, oh, and my last thing is, you know, be a gift. Please donate blood. Consider being an organ donor. You never know. If you're healthy enough, do those things. Over on College Avenue, right by Planet Fitness, there is a plasma company. You can actually sell your plasma. I'm not able to donate plasma, but it's very important. So please, if you are healthy enough, consider donating plasma as well. Thank you.
Thank you, council vice president. Councilwoman Gregory.
So I just want to say that National Night Out was indeed a great event. Want to thank the department, Police Department, for putting that on. That was a huge, a huge event, and I was really excited to be there. Great turnout.
Great turnout.
And then also, I want to first congratulate all the folks who got sworn in today. It was nice to be able to do everybody at once. That was great. And I want to thank everybody who's volunteered for our committees, especially Shonda and Brandon. Thank you so much for joining the Disability Advisory Committee. I'm looking forward to working with you guys. Unfortunately, that was about all I was able to do. Tuesday was the last day, Tuesday and Wednesday were the last days of the week that I was able to do anything because, and I wish the mayor well. He's about to go on the journey that I was on Thursday through Saturday, so I feel for him there. That is, it was not pleasant, so, you know, I hope he gets better soon.
Something about that in the table, so we'll keep, yeah, yeah.
I will try and keep it there.
Yeah, thank you.
Keep it here.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Well, my second day back, and being blessed. Got a horse because I've been under the weather again. Traveled to Kentucky and ran with something, so, and I hope they don't think I gave it to them, but I try to stay home as much as possible. For the Wycomico County, Wycomico Memorial VFW booth, 101 now wishes to thank everyone who attended the Unity Day. Chief Minshane of the Salisbury Police Department, Mayor Randy Taylor, Salisbury Fire Department and EMS, Councilwoman Sharon DeShields, Council President DeSean Dowdy, even though he was late, no sight. He did come though. I have to give it to you. I put him on live like that, too. County Council President John Cannon, and we're thankful for all the vendors, information stations, and organizations, and all the ones who gave out schools, free school supplies. We really thank you for being there, for the community. And what I do want the community to know, we don't look for money. We don't look for funds. We just look to give back. It wasn't about buying anything or anything. It was just trying to give the community something back, and we had a lot of information and a lot of free stuff out there, you know, and it's not to be talked about, it's just to help the community. Also, I would like to, also, the two young people that passed last week. Demi Jones's funeral, if anybody would love to attend, is Friday, the 16th of August. It's from 10:00 to 11:00, there's a viewing, and then the funeral will start at 11:00 a.m. And it's at 309 Civic Avenue. It's the church called The Well, and it's in that toy shopping center. Tyrone Calbert, who is a family member of mine, a young man who was shot and killed, 10 years old. His funeral is Saturday, August 17. The viewing is from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00, and then the funeral is at 11:00 at First Baptist Church, 528 Delaware Avenue. It's a sad time when we have to lose our kids, and a mother has to go find her child with a bullet in his head, when they were in the privacy of their own home, child playing on a tablet, and this is how a mother finds him. Something has to be done, and I appreciate the chief and the county and the state police, all that are, all the entities that are working on this case. I thank you so much, and I hope not long you'll find the person who did this to this child. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Councilwoman DeShields.
It's my pleasure to participate in Unity Day as well and see the coming together of everybody. As, since I've been on this, on the council, it's a wonderful, I guess, feeling that we should all have when you see the Fire Department, the Police Department, the State Police, the sheriff, all these departments that protect us, supporting everything. I have yet to go to something that they aren't also attending. So I'm just putting it out there for everyone, as Chief Minshane said, not only with this young man trying to get some information on that horrible crime, but I'm just putting it out there to support all these government or city services that are offered to us that we have protecting us, and also support our own city workers, because they work their tails off. The other thing, National Night Out, as, you know, a couple of you have mentioned, it was fun for me because I was in the food booth, and you get all kinds of comments and questions when you're doing that. But I got to meet Debbie, who is the driver for the trolley, or had been, so we had a nice, we had a nice evening. I also would like to share 40 under 40 in philanthropy awardees announced. In celebration of the 40th anniversary, the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore has announced its 40 under 40 philanthropy awardees. These young leaders give of time, talent, or treasure to charitable causes while inspiring others to create a significant difference on the Lower Eastern Shore. And two of our very own were honored with this. Jordan Ray, who is our media specialist, as Andy and Randy know, he's Executive Vice President for Inspire One Group. He was honored, as was our own Sean Dowdy, for the development manager for Green Street Housing, and we see every week. So congratulations to those two that are in our family.
Thank you.
Oh, and by the way, when you say Safe Streets, is Carroll Street in that piece? Please, Mr. Kitzrow.
Absolutely. Right, guys? We were all talking about it today.
Yes, yes.
We're close.
I'm going to start wearing a banner.
No, no. Just want to get it right, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Yes, of course. Ms. Hubener alluded to it, and so we'll actually, speaking with clerk and members of the council, we'll actually be going over a few of the rules of order and just some cleanup items. Again, a decision I had to make a few weeks ago, did not want to make that, but it was one that was necessary and one that was just given our rules of order and our regulations. Again, we're about decency and order, and we do have to follow rules, just like any other organization. So I will uphold those things and make sure that we are seen and that while we're in these chambers, it is a professional environment. So we'll go over those things, and we'll just make sure that everyone is aware of just how we should operate for the public and for us, just so we're staying on top of that. So thank you for bringing it to my attention, and hopefully we won't have to go through that ever again. Like Councilwoman Jackson said, that we did lose two young persons in this last week in Salisbury, it was definitely a mourning. So if you do have the opportunity to show your support to the family, please do so. There's a prayer vigil this Wednesday at 6:00. A few community leaders have organized that at Unity Square. So again, another way for us to show support and unity there. And again, our chief Minshane and his group, along with the Wycomico Sheriff's Department and the Maryland State Police have been working diligently. If you do have any details, you can visit Crime Stoppers, there's a number, or the website. There is a pretty hefty award, reward, rather, for information leading to an arrest. So again, these were, this was a youth, a 10-year-old that lost his life, so make sure that if you know something, please say something. I had the opportunity to visit the Junior Fire Academy, not on the graduation, I had something to do, but I went during the weekend. It was remarkable to see those young people excited about becoming future EMS fire personnel, so I'm hopeful. I don't know if I'll be here in Salisbury or what have you, but I told them, I said I'm excited, and I said, "Thank you all so much," because they were so thrilled, and they were doing something that I couldn't even see myself doing, is to take something out and to use the jaws of life on a vehicle. So I told them not to mistake my vehicle for one of those that they were testing with, so. But it was so fun to see them just enthused with that program. And then last but not least, I had the opportunity to visit the Black Excellence Community Fund at their awards dinner on Saturday, just to celebrate Black Philanthropy Month, which is August. And that is a community fund at the Community Foundation with co-founders Sonia Whitehead, Lori Carter, and Sharon Morris, who go back and support local nonprofits led by African-Americans. And it was a really good, really good night, and it was great to be in the presence, so. And we also presented a citation on behalf of City Council acknowledging their efforts. So that is all I have. Thank you all so much, and this meeting is now adjourned.